To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're gonna open it up with public comments. Whenever you stand up and speak, give your name, first and last name, so that we can get it, throw it down, not everybody knows who everybody is. And we'll try to keep it brief as we can. Does anybody got any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Council? Jerry Kincart. Served on the Bloomfield City Council for 22 years, retired. So I kinda know the decisions that you are sitting there with. I see you've got a good turnout here tonight. I would encourage the council, I've been following this in the paper, and I like the proposal that your city administrator has made. I encourage you to not let the CDBG grant go back or default on it, if at all possible. And that in the engineering aspects of it, as we did with Fritz Riddicker on many of the projects that we did as a council, Earl and John was on there with me, Jack was on there with me, Dave Thorson was sitting with the late Craig Scott. We encouraged the engineers at the time that as this construction was done, that it would be done in such a way that it could be added to later. As an example of that, over here by where the Grant Hotel used to be, the storm sewer is stubbed there to come across to pick up storm water from the inside of the southeast corner of the courthouse square here. So that was one aspect that we did. And if you go with this revised version, which I think will work out really well, and if the engineer lays room in the project for additions to it, I think that the plan should move forward.
Anybody else?
I'd like to say something. My name is Dan Baker, I'm the superintendent of schools here in Davis County. And one thing I'm super proud about in our school system and our community is our motto. Our motto is one school, one community, one goal, the best that we can be. And I'll tell you, one of the things that attracted me and my family to this community was the level of progressiveness that I recognized right away. And I know that that is, and through that comes a lot of controversy, a lot of challenges. And I would just strongly encourage the council to continue to think forward as we try, you know, the greatest driver in our school system is resident-student enrollment. And we have a great school system there. If we want to see that continue to grow and to flourish as a school system, we need residents living in Bloomfield and in Davis County. And I know that folks that, or I would like to think that folks that maybe might be considering moving to our community, we all know, you know, I've been here for six years now, I still know I'm a new guy, and I think it's what, three years, and maybe I'll be considered a part of the community. But I'm working on that, right? But I wanna, I just know that in order for our school system to continue to flourish and to grow, and to be the best that we can be, we need to have an attitude and a spirit of progressiveness. And I would strongly encourage the board, or the city council, to consider that as we move forward with your decision. And know that we've had a great partnership with the city, and I know Mr. Mayor, we talked about that, about how we're going to continue those kinds of partnerships as a school district. And I see this as a great way for us to, you know, I don't know how we can partner as a school with this decision that you have to make, but I know that this is in the spirit of progressiveness, that sure helps us as a school district continue to be supportive and have a great relationship with our community. And again, I just strongly urge the council to consider the future for our children and for the future residents of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Bruce Piper is my name, I've lived for my entire life. And I think about this courthouse when they built it in the 1870s, the people in the community had no idea of the longevity of the positive influence this would have on our community. And I would urge the council to think about, before they vote, whatever they go tonight, to look at other progressive city councils in our area. And one of them comes to mind is Palasca, West Grove, Drakesville. But the most progressive city council I can think of in this area would be Milton. Look what they've done for their progressive ideas over the last decade. When you drive through their town, look how, what their ideas did. I wonder what they think now from their progressive ideas they made 20, 30 years ago. You guys have a lot of responsibility to do right now for the next 30, 40, 50 years. Think about it and make the right choice.
Any other comments? Public comments over. Approve design and give direction to proceed to bid letting for the revised courtyard squares re-escape plan.
What is presented to you tonight is based upon what has been assumed is a compromise that was fashioned at Tuesday's meeting. Generally speaking, this is a plan that effectively restores the parking little pattern that was in existence previously to September 7th of this past year. There is probably a little bit of a reduction in the stalls numbers because we widened these stalls from nine feet to 10 feet to accommodate larger vehicles. That has been an observation that many have had all along. But otherwise, for all intents and purposes, this parking plan, which I think was a significant point of contention over the last six months, has been restored back to the plan that was, the system that was in place for set up back in prior to this past fall. That map that you see, as far as a portion of Exhibit A is referenced in the resolution, also as a form of Exhibit A is a letter that I've received today, or yesterday, actually, and it's been revised since yesterday, from Conservation Design Form that makes reference to what changes have occurred in the plan from the plan that was previously approved and for which a bid letting was put on and the bids were rejected this past summer. I think that you can see in page two of three, actually, the reason why that says page two of three, the map actually was page three, but we put the map up front. You can see the changes that have occurred from the prior plan. There is a couple of, I think, minor issues that need to be addressed tonight, and I refer that, refer you to the back page of the other handout, it's not the resolution. You also will see in that second handout that council will have is the cost savings that are factored in by this. The first question that is out there is, is there a desire for courtyard sidewalks? I know that there was a lot of discussion about that on Tuesday night, but there has to be a couple of understandings here. If installed to the corners of Washington Street, the city would be required to change out stop-and-go lights to include pedestrian crossing signals. Therefore, the installation of the sidewalks would be rounded and not to the street. The whole idea here is that we weren't going to do anything with Washington Street. There was an alternate that was bid on this with Washington Street last summer. The cost of the upgrade of the signals was estimated at $50,000. That included wiring, it included the installation of a pole where you did the push button for changing the signals for pedestrian crossing, and the installation of pedestrian crossing heads at the two intersections. That was estimated at 50,000. It came in at 170,000, which my experience tells me that that is a ridiculously high bid. And that Conservation Design Form flagged that when the bids came in as something that was extraordinarily high. The estimate that was prepared was not, for that bid, was not prepared by Conservation Design Form. They effectively subbed out that kind of work to a signal installation firm, an electrical firm that does traffic signals in Iowa, and it was their $50,000 estimate that came forward that was something that Conservation Design Form consulted with them to get their endorsement. At any rate, if sidewalks were to be installed, you'd have to have that rounded area, it would not go to the corners. There would be an attraction, if you will, for people to actually utilize it. The engineer said that under his licensure, he would not recommend putting sidewalks right to the corners at Washington Street without the idea of actually establishing crossing signal lines. If the cost of this sidewalk is not to be incurred, there would be a reduction of $90,000, and we've talked about that in the past. Please note that if we were to do this, an easement would have to come from the county if we were to do this work. And secondly, to the best of my knowledge, the county's never formally asked for this The second issue that's out there is the installation of the handicap access ramp. It was discussed, I don't think there's any real movement on that, other than the fact that it takes up a lot of space. By some accounts, a lot of people think it's not very attractive. Again, the county's never asked for this installation, and of course, the construction easement would be required from the county on that particular piece of work. What is asked in this particular case is whether you want to do an alternative bid on that circumstance, or whether you just want to say, no, you don't want to do it. Finally, there was talk about piping the rooftop drainage away from the courthouse. Given the fact that the roads have been widened, the streets have been widened, and that are effectively no real large installations for drainage swales and bio swales on the courtyard side, there is no place to put that piped water. It cannot go into the swales themselves. So the issue here is, is that there is no place to move that water. If the roof drains, the roof drains can't be hooked up to the storm sewer either, because under the grant proposal, and this again is coming straight from the engineer, it would be contrary to the purpose of the grant. The whole idea of the grant is to utilize these new pertinences to manage the storm water. I'm not going to say that an approach to hook up the stormwater drains to storm sewers in the future can occur, but in the context of this grant proposal and this construction, it would be contrary to the intent of the grant. Sheet drainage from the courtyard, as is the case now, would continue, and it could still be maintained. But if a sidewalk were installed, it would have to be flushed to the curb with intermittent shallow depressions to allow the water to actually get to the street, so it can be absorbed into the drainage. This was contrary to my own personal feeling, where I thought that we needed to have a five-foot parkway, a storage, snow storage area, but if we did that, the sidewalk would effectively act as a dam and would not be able to get the sheet drainage to go to the street. And again, as I've said with the other issues, rooftop drainage has never been formally asked by the county. I don't know whether they were interested in any of these things, to be honest, with the kind of things that it, any one of these three items, there would have to be concurrence by the county, at best we could build an alternate later on if they wanted to show interest in it. But those three questions, I think, have to be answered in the context of approval of this resolution, if the council so desires. Otherwise, the plan shows that there is approximately a construction cost savings of $1,145,000. That plan, that this plan would add 25 parking stalls to what was the plan for last year when it went out to bid, and effectively restored the parking back to what it was before. The fee for all of the work related to the design form, as far as doing the additional engineering work raised, adds another $142,000 to this project. So what you're really seeing here is a million, $2,000 of savings. I was reminded today by Jason Cooper on the phone that what was bid was just shy of 5.4 million last year, and that included all of the alternates. If you took the alternates out, the base bid would have had an estimate of probably about $2.5 to $2.6 million. But the base bid estimate with all the alternates included was at about $3.7 million. Of course, it came in at 5.4. So in context, all along, we've been saying that you've probably taken approximately $1,000, $1,200 out of this with the additional paving of, the expanded paving of the streets of Franklin, Jefferson, and Madison. The project is expanded in cost because of that additional expansion of the street construction. That's all I have to say. Any questions for me?
Who's going to be responsible for the fixing of the coal shoots in the basements of the buildings?
At this point, it is not taken out of the contract, it is a part of the contract. If you want to change that, that is up to you. The question is one of timing. There's been a discussion about whether the coal shoots can be done without doing the sidewalks. We were told that you can't build them, you can't fix them from the inside of the building, that if you're going to fix them, you need to excavate, and you need to fix them so that they can, the backfill would be compacted appropriately, and simultaneously, the wall would be, the wall plus the foundation would be fixed. The cost is inclusive of this reduced cost, but at this point in time, that was kept in because they see that it can't be done without doing the sidewalk simultaneously.
Have there already been a couple of base walls fixed up?
I don't know to the satisfaction of structural circumstances, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a comment here. I think from the surveys that we've seen going around town, parking was a concern. And this new layout does address that issue. The other concern was elderly folks that we have in town trying to get up on the tall curb that we have on the sidewalks around businesses. Is there any way that we can go to curbless sidewalk to address that?
To do that would require major changes in grade and the engineering of the project. We wouldn't have time.
Do we know what the height of this curb would be?
I don't know, do you Chris?
I don't know, off the top of my head. I can take the time to go find it, if you'd like.
I think the fact is, is that when the discussion about doing curbless occurred, it was done in the context of trying to understand what the needs were. But there will be ramping, there will be ramping adjacent to the handicapped vehicles. We could even institute, if you will, mid-block ramping, even though there wouldn't be any bump outs or anything like that. I think that we could probably address that concern in a reasonable manner without a significant design change. Doing curbless, which would then also imply that you would be doing brick pavers, would be probably more costly to say the least, and it would also take a lot more time to design when you don't have that. I, we've made this presentation based upon the distillation of what you all did on Tuesday night. There was a busy February that was here to get to what you've got now. I think that we've achieved what you were looking for, based upon that input. I think that the project is affordable from a million-dollar reduction. I think that we have it within our capability of both TIFF and bond, body capability to do this project. And also, at the same time, recognizing that after the first couple, three years, we could probably embark on significant other projects, particularly if it's related to housing and the city district. We probably need to get through this project to begin with a little bit before we even get serious about taking on another project. But quite frankly, if we were to do any kind of major project, say of housing, it probably would take two years at least of planning effort to do that. And the expectation I have of the direction of the council is, is that we may very well be looking at some other capital improvement projects that aren't related to the TIFF district here coming up this summer and fall, for implementation history. So if anything that were to happen with TIFF, that would probably, like I say, probably about three years out, when we have the opportunity to undertake other capital projects in the Just to have you understand, I have been in consultation with Bank of the West that could probably do local financing of this project. I don't know whether it would be cost-effective or not, they're checking it out. I've also been in consult with Northland Securities, who has done other bond issues for us in the past. My estimations of how we can do this financing is actually based upon some research work that I've done, big deal with Northland. What I expect that we would do for approximately a $2.5 million borrowing, whether we'd need that much or not, still remains to be seen. But about $2.5 million borrowing would say that you would do about $350,000 of principal and interest payments in the first three years, and then that would drop down to about $220,000 for the following 10 or nine years. We could stretch that out maybe to 15 years and actually lower those payments even more so, but realize that you would be drawing down the principal a little bit slower. We have $575,000 of tax increment capability. That's not the assessed valuation, that is the money that we could actually draw out of TIFF. That 350 added to the 165 would still give you some room to maneuver for individual industrial commercial expansions like we've done already. But a major industrial park project, if you will, build capital improvement, capital intensive project, again, would have to be held off until about 2022.
Here on the courtyard sidewalks, you've got, if no, the reduced cost would be $90,000. Does that mean if we don't go to the corners and do the, or is that if we don't do them at all?
If you don't do them at all, I mean, that's one estimate. The other estimate, if you want to look at it in a different place here, it says replace planned courthouse sidewalk with five-foot wide poured concrete. It says that there's an $80,000 construction savings cost. That construction savings cost actually is off of a $140,000 original estimate. You want to understand that that had brick pavers and it was 10 feet wide. So when we talk about a reduction of $90,000, actually, that's kind of overlapping some of that here. The actual net, if you did no sidewalks at all, is this 8,000 in construction savings plus the number 60. Because there's two different types of construction materials that we're looking at.
Scott? Six inches.
Six inches would be the height. Okay, thank you.
Is there an original plan where they replaced the parallel parking along the curb with sidewalk and grass? Was that to have the retention basin under it?
Yep. What's happened now is, is that because you're paving all the way to the existing curb line, it's out there now, you'll have absorption in there, the flower basins, if you will, they are effectively eliminated now, except for some at the corners, which is again, why you can't handle the stormwater drainage coming off the rooftops from the corner. You have sheet drainage going on right now that empties out in the street, the sheet drainage off of these buildings, off this building and the site itself would effectively be the same as it was before, it would be absorbed differently into the system.
So they're saying here that by, you're not changing the basin any, but by changing that from sidewalk and grass to an additional eight or 10-foot pavers, it's going to cost an extra $180,000?
Yes.
All the way around.
But that's because you're going to put the basin all the way in where it wasn't grass. So you're going to fill it in.
No, it's going to be basin anyway. It was going to be, it was going to be the drainage, the drainage swales, yes.
Yes, but it's still going to have the three and a half foot basin.
Under the grass was not basin, just under the pavement, under the, under-
That's what I asked.
Yeah, I didn't catch the, so the basin just went underneath the sidewalk, not to the grass behind it.
Okay, but the plan you had the other day had what, a four or five-foot grass strip and then the sidewalk?
Right, and that can't be done because it's sheet drainage.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, there was the, I didn't see that plan, but it was, that wasn't the full width in parking, right? That was the two lanes of parking right now, and then a sidewalk, and then a, then a strip, and then a sidewalk. So it would have been-
So they've taken the existing parallel and changing it to a grass strip and a sidewalk?
Right, but it wasn't basin back underneath the-
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't believe that was basin underneath that, I think that was just straight poured and placed concrete and grass over a traditional base, not the, yeah.
The option- County give us their blessing?
The option, let me just say what the, the option two that we talked about Tuesday night, which was just that one side, and was a $60,000 increase because of that, there's where you're 180, since it's three times 60. What were you going to say, Dan?
Does the county give us their blessing?
I haven't been in communications with the county at-
I thought you were going to do that.
Yeah.
I've talked to them. As far as I know, they haven't changed their mind, so they're not, they're not in favor of it.
Would, if the area of the parallel parking were made concrete, would it still have to have basin under it, since it wasn't going to before, when it was grass and sidewalk?
Well, what if you're going to do pavers all the way? But I, I can't answer that.
I don't believe it would need to have basin- I, I don't believe it would need to have basin if it were poured and placed concrete in the parallel parking.
So in other words, that extra cost of a hundred eighty thousand dollars for taking the basin and pavers clear to the curb would be reduced if we left the parallel parking concrete?
How would you handle the street, the sheet drainage out of the courthouse yard?
It would still just run to the-
It'd have to have traditional storms around that.
Well, it would still run the pavers, just have to knock-
It's slow, it's slow away from the curb, not towards it. This, this, we took the direction which you had, if you wanted to change that, do that, I'm not saying you can't.
Well, I'm just wondering if that would change the savings and-
My guess is, is that you're going to see a little more savings, you know, in a matter of twenty, forty, sixty, eight thousand. I don't know the number.
So something that was brought up the other night was that I feel personally that this project needs to have a cap on it. So that when we go out for bids, that you don't keep leaning further and further. Gary, you had made a comment the other night that you felt we can afford two point five million dollars.
Price of news.
I mean, if we can open it up for discussion.
What's that with the grant?
How much are we willing to spend on this project? And when you see the bid back and they approve it, that's going to be the break.
I think that, I think that where you're at right now with this project, and this does not include the grant, you're probably closer to two point seven to two point eight with these changes, based upon the estimate, but that does not include the grant. You could, you can afford two and a half million dollars, I think generally speaking. If the grant is included, I wouldn't expect this project to come in anywhere near two and a half million. It should be down around two, two, two point two, somewhere in there. But-
So you'd be comfortable if we approved two million?
I wouldn't at two million because you never know what this is going to be. We have the capability of doing two million.
I don't think-
You guys take the grant into consideration because we may not get the project in. I need to empty my entire wallet. The, the, the project itself, I think you got the letter-
I know, and that don't tell me for sure that it's going to be done, that's just the timeline.
The letter from the state says that if two of the three streets are completed in 2019, and the last street is completely completed in the middle of the construction season in 2020, that would be no problem for it. That came from the division director of IEBA for this, for this whole business. I think those are reasonable timelines if you were going to do it to fulfill the grant requirements.
They also told us that it was supposed to cost three point seven and the bid came with five point four, so. Also, since you brought this out, this Debbie Durham, the head of the IEBA, said that this would not affect future grants.
I'm, I don't know Debbie Durham. I'm just reflecting what Timothy Ladell, the divisionary commissioner, said about this. That was-
Well, it's just within the package that we were given, and I gave that to you.
Because I didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
Withholding things from council members?
Really? I didn't know, I thought it was in everybody's.
I didn't have it.
It is an address to the council.
It's addressed to Matt Greiner.
The question I have, Mayor, since you raised it, is that you don't know whether the county would be approving of this project or not. We have heard, generally speaking, that the county is significantly opposed to this project from the standpoint of the car, parking configurations. That has been returned back to what the parking configuration was all along. I don't know what else the county would have an objection unless it's these on the yard situations, which either can be eliminated or bid as alternates and then a decision can be made later. At this point in time, the project that's before you, from I think most learned X, experience from anybody who's been affiliated with this project, is, is that this really has a neutral impact on the county. I don't know what else would be the opposition here. We've taken the Washington Street completely off, the four lane business, three lane businesses have been completely resolved. The parking has been returned to the existing standard that was there. Generally speaking, just from my observation, I don't know what else the county would have an objection to.
The pavers.
Why would they care about the basin?
Because they don't want to have to repair them.
They don't repair any streets now?
They would repair them, it would be our responsibility as a dog's husband.
Still theirs.
What's theirs?
That area.
What area?
Where the parallel parking is. You know exactly what area I'm talking about. We've talked about it for two months.
Well, we've also stated that the law back in nineteen twelve, I believe it was, said that it's our responsibility to maintain it.
I don't mean it yours.
It's our responsibility to maintain it.
That don't make it yours.
It is our easement.
It's not your property. I got easements through my property, that don't mean they can come build something on it. It means you got the right way to use it, but that don't mean it's yours and you can do whatever you want. It says in there it's not to be re-appropriated, which we are putting it back to parking, but there's some of it's been turned into grass.
Actually, no. Well, just, just for those drainage bases right at the corners, yes. Which is still, which, which is still within our easement right. I think, I think that that's actually established law, Mayor. I, I, I would ask that if there's concern there, consult with the county, the county attorney.
I thought Tuesday night, we asked to have a letter sent to them to see if they would be willing to participate tonight. And that didn't get done. I've been talking to them, you guys that they're, they don't want to talk to you.
Then why would we?
Well, you would maybe just reach out, you would reach out to them, maybe they would talk to you.
You're the one who said that you were going to talk to them.
I did talk to them.
I guess in my opinion, if they were given to the county and they approved it, would maybe the option of leaving the parallel concrete and getting that a cap that we visit feel comfortable with. Would be my thought.
So you're saying not do anything tonight? That's what this meeting was for.
Well, I, I was, like Dan, I was under the impression Gary was going to send him an invitation for a joint.
You didn't instruct Gary to send that invitation because he said he was going to talk to them.
I think I mentioned sending them a letter.
But you didn't tell him to send the letter.
Well, he does plenty of other stuff without any direction, you think maybe he could have picked up on that. What do we want to vote on then?
We came here tonight to, to vote on something. And so what do we want to vote on? Are we, are we going to try to go with the plan that we talked about Tuesday night? Is that the intention? What do you guys think? Is that what you want to try to do?
This is more or less the plan I've put forward, but I did specify with county approval.
Okay, so tonight, tonight for the vote, so we can get this out to bid.
I would say if the county approves, yes.
What if they don't approve? Do we start all over again? Way forward, how do we move forward here? What do we need from the county? Why do we need county approval to take care of our streets?
We have control of everything outside of that curve goes there. If you want to put it kind of naturally, I would say.
I don't want to.
And that's the problem, that's, that kind of attitude is the problem that's been plaguing this whole project.
Can the county make the legal claim that they have control over the easement? I mean, we've never heard from the county saying that they have that ability.
They own it.
And, and we have the easement?
And it says you can't re-appropriate it. And I know you have an easement, but an easement doesn't give you the authority to do whatever you want. Without their approval, they still own it.
It's still going to be the same use that it is now. We're not changing the use.
But you're changing the product that's there.
Nobody ever said a word when it got changed years ago when they redid it then. It's not the way it was in nineteen twelve or whatever reason.
No, because it was mud.
Yep.
Is the additional design fees considered in the project?
It's, it's, it's on top of it. In other words, that one million, one forty-five is actually one million, two thousand dollars.
That's the design fee for changing- Hundred and forty-two thousand, what's going to cost?
How much of the six hundred thousand dollar grant's already been used?
I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I looked it up a couple, so it was fifty-five to sixty thousand roughly. I don't have the exact number, but that's approximately enough.
So you don't have six hundred thousand, you got five hundred fifty thousand.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Rick, as you're, why don't you, if you're going to vote on this, and I don't care if we do or we don't or not, if you're going to vote on this, why don't you add to some motion that this is subject to the board's approval and further subject to, if it is approved, to put the pavers up to the current courtyard concrete, that the city would agree that they will maintain that in future.
We've always maintained it, so why wouldn't we continue?
Thanks, Rick.
How you guys feeling about that? Adding that to it?
Mr. Mayor, can I have a comment shortly?
Yeah, make it quick.
The easement that you're in discussion with was taken by the city of Bloomfield from the Davis County Board of Supervisors. That extra ten feet was taken specifically for expanding the parking around the square. In that concept, we were to install it, maintain it for as long as we needed it, and then that land was to revert back to the city, to the county. Now, we weren't allowed to go in there and construct on it or anything other than to change its purpose was strictly for parking. So I can see where it could be, the city could, if they so desire, to put their permeable pavers into that point. It would really have no effect on, on the lease agreement that the city and the county currently have.
So this resolution just approves the project to move forward?
Yeah, you would still have to have approval of a ward of the bid and approval of the financing. If either one of those two options are not adequately addressed or are, are not approved, then the project goes away anyway. What happens is, is that this gets you to the end of June. And as Scott's pointing about, if this project exceeds a certain amount, you all can vote against it if you so desire.
But this resolution basically says we're going to spend the money to have them redesign it.
That's, that's the commitment you're making tonight. It's to have them-
Redesign and develop the specifications for it to go, to go to bid. I would put forward that that the county has the option of agreeing with the pavers to the curb or they can pay for concrete on their eight to ten foot with their-
Okay, let's talk about something else. On the inside on the courtyard, on the inside on the courtyard, let's not run the sidewalk all the way to the corner, so we don't have to worry about the buttons.
Forget the sidewalks and door.
Okay, let's forget about that. And let's talk about the handicap ramp. Let's leave it as an alternate here, we don't have to do anything with it. Then we can move this along, we can look at the numbers that come in, we can talk to the county about design and so forth, but it's just an alternate. And we don't have to worry about that either.
Dan, I want a cap. Let's go.
Two point five.
Total.
Total.
Grant included.
Grant included, two point five?
Design included.
You can't, it, it won't work at two point five now? Well, grant included, okay. Let, let me just review the, let's review the bidding again. This project is, this project is not, without, without the grant, this project's about two point seven to two point eight because of the changes from Tuesday. So if it's two point seven, two point eight, the grant is five hundred fifty, it'll get you down to about two and a quarter, okay? So what you're saying is, is if it goes to two and a half, then it's, it's not acceptable. That's fine, the fact of the matter is, is that- That's fine. The fact of the matter is, is that, um, the decision for that comes later when you either approve the bids and, and direct the financing or you don't.
Yeah, but I don't want to hear later. Well, that's closed. We can, we can make that. I want a solid number.
It's, it's your choice. I'm not gonna say you can't. I'm just saying that you still will have a decision to make regardless of the two point five.
That's why we didn't approve it last year.
We gotta spend a hundred and forty thousand if not approved. We don't like it.
Those are all your changes.
The thing we're changing is based on what? Two thirds of the community.
Changes are changes.
We wouldn't be sitting here if you had a hundred percent community support for this project.
No, we wouldn't.
It'd already been done if they had the support.
I don't think any project will, will have a hundred percent support on.
Well, we got a motion. If so, please read aloud it here so we can hear it before you vote. Well, I guess it can die for lack of a motion. Assign two elected officials to an interview committee for the public.
We're not done, we're not done here.
Nobody's made a motion.
We've waited months and months for this. I think we have a little more time.
I'll make the motion that we go with Exhibit A, taking out the things that are on this back page, take out courtyard sidewalks. The handicapped access ramp is an alternate. And no rooftop drain work done. And no cap because we can make that decision later. That's my motion.
John?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Darren?
No.
Earl?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Does anybody want to make an amendment to the motion?
You gotta make the amendment before you vote on it.
No, does anybody want to make an amendment to that motion?
Make a vo, make a motion to reconsider.
Make a motion, unmake a motion to reconsider.
Darren?
No.
Earl?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Jack?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
The motion is, that the issue's now back on the floor? Is, the issue's back on the floor now, so is there another?
If they want, want to amend this.
Same dies for lack of a, other motion.
You have, you have the motion on the table. You need to restate the motion since it's reconsidered, so you need to vote it again. So you need to make a motion.
I move we go back with the original motion that I made. We gave them an opportunity to, to discuss it again. They chose not to.
Jack? Darren?
No.
Scott? Earl?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, Mayor. Assign two elected officials to an interview committee for the Public Works Director. Um, it would be, uh, I, I'm, I'm, it's my intention to put together an interview panel that would include, um, both, uh, or I shouldn't say both, but include, uh, employees as well as two elected council members. I hired counsel, uh, two elected officials. One would be the mayor, uh, the other I would, uh, recommend, uh, Earl.
We have a motion?
I really, I really thought that as far the DPD deposition, I thought John was probably a better person on that. Compared to myself. He knows more about construction and those things than I do.
I just suggested Earl because he obviously represents one half of this body, and I didn't know whether John, if he able to do it. But if John wants to do it.
Well, I would assign myself and John to the committee to for Public Works Director interviews.
Looked approved.
Scott?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
I would expect the interviews would be in about, um, ten to twelve days. Interviews.
Create a committee to review out in the center for the Police Department Administrative Assistant. We've had a pretty good turnout on applications. I talked to the chief and he recommended we kind of put a committee together to help him review them and kind of narrow them down. So I was just gonna couple myself and a couple councilmen to help with that. I, I don't know if people would be interested working with that.
I feel comfortable doing that.
Is that a? Is that okay with everybody else?
Yep. Uh, uh, just as a reminder, when you have three, well, no, you got two, touch yourself, so you can still do it without opening.
There's just such an amount of them that it'd be quicker, I think, with somebody, you know, more person, the more people that kind of goes through them. I don't know that he even had them all yet. He acted like he was getting two or three a day.
I would like to make one comment as far as these, uh, applications, that in the future I want, would like to see all applications can also be taken in writing, not strictly computer application. Somebody should be able to walk in the door, take an application, and return it.
We have an application form. There's no question about that, that can be done in writing. If you're talking about Public Works Director. That, uh, applications, people were asked to fill that out if they were interested in simultaneously the resume material and all that.
Was the application available at the time?
We have applications all the time. They're standard form. But there was a requirement to fulfill, uh, a resume and things of that sort in addition to the application.
That, that can also be handed in at the office.
Well, we didn't do that because electronic is, is the typical way it's done for these kinds of positions throughout.
I, I would submit that from now on that they are available by hand.
All we have to do is download. I, I mean, you, you can get it.
They're hard copy.
You're saying that somebody didn't.
Wanted to apply and couldn't get to a computer in time and fashion.
Okay. I understand what you're saying now.
And I don't think I fully understand the process of trying to get it either. I mean, I think it's, but they weren't tech savvy.
That would be a problem for this job.
Not being tech savvy.
Yes, it would be a significant.
Well, I mean, a lot of it's hands-on, but it'd be handy.
That would be significant, a significant deterrent.
Well, I guess I need a motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Oh. A motion for the committee for the.
Second.
Scott, Earl, and myself. Uh, Sean. You're just on the committee, Sean.
Darren, make a motion. Jack? Scott? Darren?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Move to adjourn. Everybody's favor say aye.
Aye.